Everyone, welcome to this Wednesday, August 13th, 2025 Regular Meeting of Council. I will call our meeting to order at 9:05 a.m. and I'll ask everyone to stand for the singing of our National Anthem, please.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all of us command. (Music)
I see we went back to the old version, Nathan, rather than the previous one. Well, that was the meeting before?
Yeah, we had a surprise one two meetings ago, I think it was.
Are there any additions to the agenda this morning?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. Yes, administration would like to add 13.2 CAO report.
13.2 CAO report. Perfect, thank you for that. Can I get a member of council to approve the agenda for the August 13th, 2025 Regular Meeting of Council with the addition of 13.2 CAO report? Councilwoman Gomana, thank you very much, all in favor? That is carried. Can I get a member of council to approve the July 30th, 2025 Regular Meeting of Council? Councilor Clark, thank you for that, all in favor? That is carried. This morning, we have no proclamations. We do have three public hearings this morning. Our first up is 5.1, which is Public Hearing for Bylaw 2025-06D Municipal Development Plan Amendment to the Future Land Use Map. I will declare the public hearing open at 9:08 a.m. for Public Hearing by Law 2025-06D. I am Nancy Dawes, the mayor of Drayton Valley, and I'll be chairing the hearing today. So on behalf of council, I'd like to welcome everyone here today, and those present are all of council members, administration, and members of the gallery. The secretary of the hearing, Ms. Jocelyn Whaley, is the CAO, Chief Administrative Officer for the town of Drayton Valley. And we also require a list of potential speakers for the public hearing today. So any persons who have joined the meeting online and are wishing to be heard from the gallery, please post your name in the chat online. Anything, Nathan?
No. That is the end.
Okay, perfect, thank you. The public hearing for by law 2025-06D Municipal Development Plan Amendments to Future Land Use Map is now open, and the secretary will now announce the purpose of the hearing, Ms. Jocelyn Whaley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. The purpose of by law 2025-06D is to amend the Municipal Development Plan Future Land Use Map to bring it into compliance with proposed land use by law amendments, which you will hear in subsequent public hearings. This land use map was not amended when the municipal development plan was approved, but stems from the original annexation of lands back in 2012.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. So the ground rules of the hearing are that no one is to met or no one is, or sorry, that this is not meant to be debated on between presenters, and all comments must be directed to council through the chair, which is myself. So anyone that's wanting to speak at the time may wish to do so and to provide input to council and have the opportunity. So first, I will offer over the mic to Ms. Whaley to speak first on behalf of administration to outline the facts and to present any recommendations for the proposed by law.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The amendments proposed to the future land use map are to remove the designation of urban reserve and allow for residential and/or commercial development in the area. Urban reserve was placed on the land when it was annexed with no particular direction on what it was supposed to be turned into going forward. Now that we're moving forward with new developments, this amendment is required.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. I'll now ask any members of the public who are wishing to be heard in favor of the by law to please type your name or online. Anyone from the gallery? We don't have a lot of people today here in our gallery, so if there's no further comment, I'll now call on counselors to ask questions of administration. This is for clarification only, this is not for comment or debate. Seeing that there is none, and there's no further testimony, thank you all for attending the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing at 9:11 a.m. And next up, we have on the agenda is 5.2 is our second public hearing for by law 2025-05D, which is the redistricting of the southeast 1949, seven west of the Fifth Meridian Public Hearing. So I will declare this public hearing open at 9:12 a.m. Again, I am Nancy Dawes, the mayor of Drayton Valley, and I will be chairing this hearing today. So on behalf of council, I'd like to welcome everybody. Those present today are all members of council, administration, members of the public, and those online. The secretary of the hearing again is Ms. Jocelyn Whaley, our CAO for the town of Drayton Valley. And for those that have joined online, if you can just type your name in the chat, please, if you're wanting to be heard from the gallery today or anyone in the gallery, I'll just wait a minute. Nothing? Okay, so the public hearing for the by law is now open, and Mr. Jocelyn Whaley will now announce the purpose of the hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose of the hearing is to hear the redistricting proposal for southeast 1949, seven west of the Fifth. This is to redistrict the parcel from industrial to new residential and from urban reserve to the acreage residential. This was an applicant-motivated amendment, and we'll bring it into compliance with the current land use by law and the proposed future land use by law map.
Thank you for that. You said industrial to new residential, sorry, was that?
Sorry, from urban reserve to new residential.
Well, this one is urban reserve, too? Yeah, okay. So urban reserve to new residential. Okay, thank you for that. So the ground rules of the public hearing are the same as the previous public hearing. It's not meant to be debated between presenters. If anyone's wanting to speak and provide input to council, they are able to do so. Do you have any further comment, Ms. Whaley, on the facts of the?
No, Madam Chair.
Public hearing, thank you very much for that. So any members of the public who are wishing or the members that are online are wishing to be heard in favor of the by law, please type your name online or please stand in the gallery. So there is no comment on this particular public hearing as well, so I will now call on counselors to ask questions of administration for clarity only, no debate or comment. Councilwoman Gomana?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll ask a question for clarification. So I believe these lands are annexed lands.
Through the chair to Councilwoman Gomana, yes, they are.
Okay, so with these changes, would the property appraisals and taxes kind of align with the town instead of the annexed, I guess, agreements?
Through the chair to Councilwoman Gomana, this would trigger the requirement for the town taxation to apply as opposed to the annexation agreement.
Perfect, thank you.
Oh, sorry, could you repeat that?
Through the annexation agreement, previously, their, the taxes of the annexed land fell under the Brazo County tax scheme. This will put them under the Drayton Valley tax scheme.
Okay, there's not a portion that's grandfathered or it's all?
Once changed, you lose the grandfathering.
Oh, okay, perfect, thank you very much for that. Any other questions to administration on this particular by law? No? Okay, perfect. So where am I? So if there's no further comment, then, no further testimony, thank you all for attending, and I will close the public hearing for this particular by law at 9:15 a.m. And then our last public hearing this morning is for Public Hearing by Law 2025-07D, and this is for redistricting the northeast of 1549, seven west of the Fifth Meridian, and I will declare this public hearing open at 9:16 a.m. I am still Nancy Dawes, the mayor of Drayton Valley, the chair of this hearing today, and on behalf of council, I want to welcome everyone. Those present today are all members of council, administration, members of the public, and those online. The secretary, Ms. Jocelyn Whaley, will be the secretary for this hearing, and if there is a list of potential speakers or anyone that's wanting to be heard from the gallery online, please type your name into the chat. Okay, so this, the public hearing for by law 2025-07D for redistricting is now opened, and I will hand it over to Ms. Whaley to announce the purpose of this hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose of this hearing is to redistrict northeast 1549, seven from urban reserve to residential acreage. Again, this is applicant-driven, and will bring it in line not only with the ability to develop under the current land use by law, but makes it contiguous with our neighboring municipality and their style of development.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. You have outlined the facts and the presentation on the proposed by law, so I'll now call from any members of the public who are wishing to be heard in favor of the by law, please type your name in the chat or stand in the gallery. Nothing, Nathan?
No.
Perfect, thank you for that. So if there's no further comment, excuse me, I'll call from the counselors to ask questions of administration for clarity only. Councilwoman McGee?
Thank you, Mayor Dawes. The, what, what I was wanting to know is that we advertise all of this through our different forms of advertising, that there's a public hearing, people, and so, and it's well-mapped, you can tell what we're talking about. I don't see maps here, but I know where the lands are, so I'm just thinking of, if you were from the public, you'd understand this.
Through the chair to Councilwoman McGee, apologies, the maps were supposed to be included in this package, and I left them off, so that was my error, I apologize. They, with the advertisement and the notifications that were mailed out as per your by law, the maps were included.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. If there's no further questions from counselors, then, and there's no further testimony, I thank everyone for attending this final public hearing, and I'll close the public hearing at 9:18 a.m. And that, losing my voice already, and that wraps up our public hearings for this morning. We'll jump into our delegations. First up is Staff Sergeant Ryan Hoopner for 6.1 RCMP Crime Stats and Call for Service Report.
Morning, everybody. All right, I don't have a ton for you, but I'll go through the stats. They're a little different, kind of changed their, the way they produce now, they're so, they'll look a little different, but they're basically the same thing. Biggest thing of note here is our person crime is up. In-person crime is always challenging to kind of get a hold of, but it's our assaults are quite up. So what I want to speak about about that is that it's not random assaults, these are all kind of known assaults. Our domestics are up a little bit, so we're not really sure how or why, but person crimes, in my experience, are kind of, they're not something we can really proactively target. The community does a lot of that work with their anger management courses and the different organizations out there that are working steadily on that. So yeah, we're going to keep monitoring that. I do know two years ago, our provincial, the county side, the person crime stats went way up, and then the next, these last years, they dropped, and there's no real rhyme or reason that we can kind of target. The other thing that is going on in our community right now is, I've talked about this before, we kind of track motor vehicle thefts as a precursor to more crime. We're getting hammered right now with motor vehicle thefts, so as a community, make sure you're locking your doors and you're tucking your vehicles away in a safe place. It's, we have our crew working on it. There is definitely a couple different crews in town right now that are stealing trucks and are, there, some of them are using for crime trucks, and I believe the others are going to a couple chop shops that we're working on getting a hold of. But we had eight vehicles stolen in July, and so that is way up, but we are averaging about one or two. So there are about three individuals that have recently been released. They always time their release for summer. I don't, it's very smart, I guess, but who wants to come out in the winter? But it always makes their summer really busy. So yeah, that is probably our biggest concern as an office right now, because we know that when we watch those vehicle thefts go up, it just triggers our break in errors to our businesses go up and all the other kind of crime that goes with it. So we have some targets, and my GIS crew is working hard at getting a hold of that. The other thing that continues to kind of steadily increase is our mischief calls are still back up, and that's kind of our, like, people sleeping in vestibules, that type of idea, we're still seeing a bit of an increase in that. It kind of slowed down. There's a couple individuals that aren't in town, but some people have come back as well, so we're still getting those calls, but they're not. If we flip to the next page, I've included this before, I think in the year end, and I'll start including this. You can see, it's kind of good capture, because it tells us, you can see our top file account is still mischief, but there's just not a lot of work, those files. And you look at the left, even though our mischief files are our top file, it is our fourth in type for workload. So while those files cause us workload, it's not the biggest driver. Our biggest driver, you can see there, is still mental health and the number of mental health calls we get called to. So, and then, as you guys know, the transport and the time that takes, it is still, I mean, that's been the last two years, and it hasn't changed this year, that that is still the biggest use of our time, is in our mental health calls. And as you know, mental health specifically isn't really a policing issue, but yet it is our biggest time consumer. Yeah, other than that, it's the assaults, sex assaults, those are all, it's just because those investigations take time, especially sex assaults, those, our numbers aren't specifically up, but those investigations are very in-depth, and they take a lot of work. So that's kind of the update I have. I'll take questions. A good follow-up note, it was about 10 days ago, a couple of our members intercepted an individual, actually came in as a driving complaint. When they pulled it over, they managed to, the guy was intoxicated on drugs, they managed to get, work their way into the vehicle, just with some provincial authority, illegal cigarettes, give us arrest and search authority of the vehicle, so there was some illegal cigarettes in there. And through that, they located 200 grams of fentanyl, which is about 2,000 uses. They use it by a point, and that would street value, that would be about $60,000. So it's a really good snag, and it all just came from just going out and doing police work, getting impaired driver called in, and going out and finding it on the highway, and then working their way through legislation and getting into that. So good job by the members, and yeah, 2,000 hits of fentanyl that could have killed people that was off the street, so that's good news.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Good news story, right?
Yep.
That's awesome, thank you for that, thanks to all your members, too.
Yeah, I'll take questions for the rest of that.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions this morning? Councilwoman Clark?
Ryan, I'm pleased to hear you say that, you know, when it comes to the violent crimes, the assaults, those sorts of things, it's not random, right? That was actually going to be my question today, because I've chatted with some, some older folks in the recent weeks, and one of the things is, oh, you know, we're afraid to go for a walk, because we're afraid we're going to get, you know, assaulted or something. It's like, that's not the case, right? And like you said, it's known persons hurting known persons, so that's good. So now, when it comes to like our walking paths and such, I know, like, my wife and I walk them all the time, and there's a couple places I know that, like, for lines of sight, right, kind of bushy areas, are there things the town can do? Like, should we be going and kind of slashing out that underbrush, and then there's creating lines of sight, stuff like that, or?
Yeah, I mean, we're not, I guess that's something that, as a town, you'd have to decide. I know it definitely, and in the community, it definitely changes then the look of that walk, right? Because it's not quite as pretty. So we're not seeing assaults on those walking paths. People aren't getting jumped, walking through our walking paths, like, we're just, it's just not happening. The walking paths are safe. So I mean, lines of sights are all obviously nice, especially when we talk about, if you're trying to protect your business, you know, crime prevention through environmental design, line of sight is a huge thing, taking that away, making sure people can see, and people can be seen. You want to do that on your walking paths, I suppose it would give that same idea, where people can be seen if they're in the trees and they're, you know, hiding out. We just don't have the, if you're looking for data about whether there's assaults occurring on this path, they're just not.
Councilwoman Gomana?
Good morning, Ryan. I guess there's a good news story about breaking and entering, it seems, eh? Our breaking and entering is way lower than before, so that's fantastic. My question is about vehicle theft. You know, federal government rolled out this new plan, and you know, the stats seem to be lowering according to their stats, so is that affecting what we do here? Is there more improvement, or what are we seeing in the ground?
I don't think the, that their plan really has anything to do with our vehicle theft stats. Our vehicle theft stats over the years have, have been completely driven by certain offenders who reside in this area, when they're in and when they're out. It's the same offenders that were now working that I worked seven years ago when I first started here in charge of GI eight years ago. So, and when, you know, they go to jail for 18 months, when you do them, when you, you know, hit the chop shop, seize all the trucks back, they go to jail, 18 months, they get back out, and slowly, you just see that track up. So I feel locally, our vehicle thefts are really driven by two or three, right now, I'd say there's probably two crews that are working and hitting this area, but they're from us, Breton, Lorsby area. And we'll see, but the goal is, is that once we put those individuals back in jail, over the years here, we've seen that suddenly just goes down, and then we'll wait for them to get back up and start to track up again. Vehicles are getting a little harder to steal, so most of the vehicles they're targeting are the older models that aren't chipped keys. We still don't have, you know, if you're getting into organized crime in the city, where they're getting like chip readers and stealing vehicles that they're shipping overseas, or they're really the higher-end vehicles, that's not what we're getting taken here. It's your early 90s, early, late 90s Chevys, Fords, Dodges, that don't have the chipped keys, they're, they're easy to get into and easy to steal. Which, if you own one of those, there are things you can do, you know, switch, kill switches you can install that can slow them down at least, or make it a little more difficult. Even steering wheel locks, to be honest, it's old-school technology, but it slows them down, it would make them have to cut that, and that, they probably would just move on to the next one.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilwoman McGee?
Just following, excuse me, on the vehicles, is there a type of vehicle that's being stole? Is it mainly trucks or?
It's trucks, yeah.
So, and half done and up, or, because I see a lot of?
It's really the years, so like your, yeah, those 90s, even up into early 2000s, up to the point where they started putting in chipped keys, so that kind of 2006, 2007, all the vehicles' keys started being with chip technology. So it's anything prior to that, and it's domestic. Yeah, we don't see a lot of our, like, it's Ford, Dodge, Chevy.
Ford, eh?
Oh, Ford, Ford at one point was the most, a white Ford truck was the most commonly stolen truck in Alberta for a long time. It's actually kind of shifted to Chevy, because I think Ford owners have kind of figured it out and started to do a lot in the, we call them round-meared Fords. It's, Ford changed their mirrors to be in a square when they chipped, and the ones before that, the mirrors round, and so that, when we're driving and they're coming at us, we'll be like, round-meared Ford on that plate, because they're so commonly stolen. But it's, it's a generation, it's like that 90, late 90s generation of Ford truck. And they often will prefer the little bigger ones, but they'll take, like, they prefer the 250s especially, they like those, the diesel 250s are really popular, but they'll take diesel parts, though, diesel trucks and diesel parts are worth more than the gas ones, so they like the diesels, yeah.
And, so we digressed a little, but I keep leaving my keys in my old vehicle, you know, but they're not.
They just won't take it, though.
At least it's running, keeps leaving it running always.
I leave it running at 7:00. I don't know.
The, around the, the mental health calls, I, you know, in my reading of our, of our free press, the, I see we're, we're out at the landfill more often than we have in the past. Is that, is that the case?
Yeah, maybe a little bit. I think that's summer, too. More people end up out there in the summer, so we end up there, out there a little bit more. Yeah. And that's lots of mental health, like, lots of our mental health calls are definitely that unsheltered population, that's just goes hand in hand with homelessness, and mental health is always there, so, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to, to, I thought that the case, but thanks, Ryan, thanks for you, thanks for your team, yeah.
And with the mental health, like, being at the top of your workload, has anything changed with supports or, you know, to your team and things like that?
No.
No.
Nothing has changed.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
Lola and I have been meeting actually with Jessica Doucette with AHS to see if there's anything, like, with AHS, we're not going to get a facility here, I know we're not, it's just, like, to have a designated facility in Drayton Valley is a huge undertaking.
Yeah.
It's got to be a secure facility, and there's a whole bunch of requirements with that. Our current kind of angle on that is to see if we can get CPOs authorization to transport after we do the apprehension. With the new legislation for mandatory treatment and stuff, CPOs are included in that, and we don't, it's not finalized, we don't know where that will eventually flush out, but that would be a huge load. Like, I get that we probably still would have to have the authority to do the apprehension, and that would still just be designated to us, but if we could then pass that person off to a peace officer to do the transport, would be a huge load. Currently, there is no authority for them to take that person over and do that transport. The Act designates that we will transport them to a designated facility, so, but if we could get them, that, that could be a feasible change.
Mm-hmm.
That would take provincial change, though.
Provincial, so are these early discussions, or is there actually work being done, or is it in progress to have the authority given to the CPOs to be able to do this?
So these are early discussions with Lola, Jessica, and I.
Okay.
And it's kind of goes, it's probably a good time, because it kind of goes along with the new Mandatory Treatment Act, where it's, that act reads very much like the Mental Health Act, and if we're going to include peace officers in that, then there, makes sense that they're included in the Mental Health Act as well. So we'll see on that, but that is, yeah, that's our current, like, we just know we're not going to get a designated facility here, we're going to, somebody is going to have to transport. But does that have to be a police officer?
Yeah.
Or could it be a designated, you know, mental health peace officer?
Yeah, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, keep us in the loop with that, and wherever we have to push and advocate and get those changes, right? Because then that helps take that workload off your plate, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it for me. Thank you very much for your report and all that your team does. You had a, a good story out of there. So it's always good to hear when we can take drugs off our street and, and save lives. So thank you and everyone for working hard and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
I wonder if that's something we should take to Alberta Munis as a-
Resolution.
Resolution?
That's what I was thinking, if it is in time. I was also thinking, I was going to save it for a bit later. I don't really know all the details, but I have orientation tonight for sitting on the Health Advisory. And there's the four pillars under there. So it's to gather information in your community, and then we discuss what we want to drive up regionally. So maybe that's something we think of under that pillar, right, as well? If we want to, yeah, we could maybe stick it there, because I know there's other community members that are sitting on that as well. So maybe we, maybe that's one of our things. I'll, I'll kind of understand a little bit more, I'm hoping, tonight, how those four pillars work. But I know that it's community feedback, and I know it's what we want. So maybe that's between, you know, RMA and Alberta Munis and all of that. Because, yeah, I think that's a huge one. We always hear that all the time, is that the amount of time our RCMP are taking on dealing with mental health is huge, right?
It's a huge time sucker.
It's huge. Oh, can you use your mic, Nick?
I remember previously asked about, you know, if a private company could provide that service. And I'm not sure what the requirements are as far as law enforcement are to haul somebody around like that, or if, you know, if you had a secure vehicle. You know, seems like it would be a, a pretty good thing for a, for a private company to just take over, start running a back and forth. Because, yeah, so true. It's, it's a huge time sucker for the RCMP. They could be doing other things already instead of driving people back and forth.
Well, and especially when it's not a policing issue, right? When you think it's the number one thing that's happening in workload and calls for services. And then when you start to move down, then there's crimes at the RCMP, but that's at the top, right? And they can't get to all that if they're doing that. I guess sheriffs too, right? Yeah. Yeah, I think definitely we have to keep having these conversations. Counselor McGee?
Just to add to it, though, if you, when he talks about time, it would be good to know what that means when he says time. And if it's, if it's taking half of my time. You know, like, what is that number?
On a daily basis, like hours?
Yeah, somehow so that you can use that as your stat to say you need to change a couple of things in your legislation, which are somewhat, I think, easy changes. I would hope that we can, to the private point that, that we made, if there's a way to do that, then I can figure it out. But we need to know the numbers, right?
Yeah. So our one and only RCMP, our one and only delegation this morning was our RCMP crime stats and calls for service. So do we feel that there's any business arising from the delegation this morning? Or do we want to wait and see where Lola and the team and Ryan go with this? Or, or, you know, like you said, Alberta Munis in RMA are later this year, but we've probably already missed the, the cutoff date for resolutions, right?
I believe so, Madam Mayor.
So it could maybe go to spring leaders, right? There's, we still have time, or next council will still have time to push that. But for takeaways, I guess, our business is just let Lola and Ryan and the team continue to gather the information and maybe like Counselor McGee had suggested is how much time exactly, right? Ms. Whaley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe also Staff Sergeant is going to be sitting on the Mayor's Task Force for the Unhoused, at which point we can ask him for those pieces of information, because that would be useful, again, also for that committee.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. We don't need any motions coming out of that. Okay, perfect. We'll jump into our decision items. First up is 8.1, Drayton Valley and District FCSS 2024 Annual Report for RFD 25166. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm just gonna click through here to the slides. There we go. Okay, good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here. So today I'm presenting our 2024 FCSS Annual Report. How our reporting works is our year ends in December, and then we do our provincial reporting, April and May, submit it to the province, and then wait for them to approve it. So that's why I'm presenting 2024. So I'll briefly review our local FCSS and our strategic priorities that influence our program spending, and then I'll go over our 2024 Financial and Outcome Report. Our local FCSS is a partnership between the Province of Alberta, the Town of Drayton Valley, Brazu County, and Parkland County, and we provide services in those areas. Since 1998, we've delivered prevention-based services that strengthen individuals, families, and communities. Our current FTE is 2.6, and we also have two casual home support workers. So we provide services to the community in three ways. First is directly. We provide support through referral, systems navigation, and programming based on the identified priorities of belonging, building empathy and access to supports and mental wellness. Indirectly, we support community organizations to deliver programming through our grant funds. And our priorities for this are connection, volunteerism, and mental health. The third component is community development. So our roles include collaborating, supporting, and encouraging coordination on community issues. Our priorities for this include poverty and income equality, mental health and wellness, housing and homelessness, and community gathering spaces. This next slide shows how our strategic plan falls within the provincial overarching goals of FCSS, and then also how it aligns with portions of the Town of Drayton Valley Corporate Business Plan. So the areas that we most closely align with in the business plan are include diverse and welcoming communities, local programs for vulnerable populations, and amenities to age and place. So our total operating budget for 2024 was just over $450,000. With FCSS, the finances are an 80-20 split between the province and the municipality. So our revenues included the following. The Town of Drayton Valley contributed just over $46,000 in addition to its $184,000 provincial grant. Brazu County contributed just under $34,000 in addition to its $136,000 grant. And Parkland County contributed approximately $7,000 in addition to its $29,000 provincial grant. We also had some revenues from home support and just other revenues we had through the year. We ended up ending the year with a surplus of about $12,000. Just, we had some grant funds that were unspent and that were returned to us at the end of the year. So we had to apply to the province, province to carry those over to 2025. And I just found out last week that they've approved that. So we'll be putting those monies into our grant funds for this year, which is good because now we can have a fall grant run. So that's great news. So moving on to expenses for 2024, the budget provided $120,000 to our grant program. We had two grant runs that year. We did winter and, and spring. The grant requests for the year were $275,000, so almost a double of what we were able to grant out. But we did provide 15 external programs, including the grants listed here on this slide. I'll highlight a couple of them. First is Wildrose School Division. They received $25,000 for their family wellness program. This program provides short-term assistance to students and their families by providing emotional, behavioral, and social support to help foster resiliency. The Drayton Valley and Area Community Food Bank was granted $17,333 for their volunteer coordinator position. This supports our priority of volunteerism and creating a sense of belonging in our community. $16,000 was granted to Drayton Valley Community Learning for their community connections and the newcomer support team. The outcome of these projects is to create a sense of belonging and connection to those who are new to Drayton Valley, and also provide a central place that newcomers can go to access information and resources.
So that last slide, I, like, I don't see one group on there that, let's call it, isn't worthy of it, right? You know, do we have an idea of how oversubscribed we were for those, those grant funds?
So, like, yeah, the requests were $275,000, and we were able to grant out $120,000. So there was quite a bit that we weren't able to provide funding to it. Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, these are all absolutely worthy. It's just there's other worthy ones that just obviously, you can't be everything to everybody all the time. And
Yeah.
That's unfortunate, but it is what it is, right?
Yeah, it's difficult for our board, but kind of have processes to kind of go through the applications and make decisions at the best that they can for the funding. So this next slide, this is the rest of our budget, which was $330,000, funded many different initiatives. We provide to the community or who we're community partners with. Sometimes people ask me, well, what does FCSS do? And I kind of think of this slide. And I'm like, well, there's a lot that we do. Let's try to break it down a little bit. These are some of the programs. I'll highlight a few of the outcomes that I reported to the province from, from these. So that provincial report that you guys saw in your packages, the, the monies in those, that money includes like staff wages, program supplies, and like administration costs. Everything's kind of lumped into, to each of those. So I'll talk a little bit about home support. So home support is designed to assist individuals in remaining in their homes, reducing isolation, and reducing the necessity for higher, higher levels of care. We provide non-medical home support and companionship to community members in their residences. In 2024, we provided it to 34 seniors. $35,765 was spent on that program, and then we had around $15,000 of revenues. $51,900 was spent on information and navigation for seniors' resources. So that includes things like helping with paperwork, forms, navigating CPP, seniors' benefits, Service Canada, Blue Cross, tax assistance, and housing applications. We offer that program in our office and also throughout many seniors' housing locations in the community. We estimate referrals and resources were requested through that program approximately 2,300 times that year. $39,900 was allocated to the non-senior and information referral program. So this program helps reduce poverty and ensure individuals are accessing the programs and services they qualify for. It's very similar to the program for seniors, we're just navigating different services. And we provided approximately 2,700 referrals through that program. We also worked on building networks, partnerships, and collaborations to help us identify and address community concerns. $26,000 was allocated to this. Some of those collaborations would be like the Healthy Community Coalition, Community Parenting Coalition, the Newcomer Support Team, the Education Awareness Working Group, the Case Development Group. Next, I just wanted to highlight the workshops. So $12,750 was spent on workshops. We did information sessions with CRA, Service Canada. We did seniors' benefits sessions all throughout the community. We did sessions on community resources. We did one on internet safety with Wildrose School Division. We did some on elder abuse, and also a Care and Prepare workshop series. And for service providers, we hosted a SafeTalk course. And then we also provided some assistance at that managing wildfire anxiety session. The last one on the slide there is Making Financial Sense. We've been offering that program for 15 years now. It's a free program for community members, and it's mandatory for the residents in the town's affordable housing program. Topics included are things like job planning, budgeting, home and auto insurance, like how did your taxes, estate planning, online safety, renting, eating healthy on a budget, understanding your credit score, buying your first home, and other financial planning. So that year we had 14 participants, 11 sessions, and 50 volunteer hours for that. So kind of to sum up all the stats, there was a combined total of 23,320 participants in all of our programs. That would be the programs we funded, as well as the ones we hosted. And then 1,200, or 212 volunteers contributed 11,051 volunteer hours. Again, that's through our in-house programs and then also those we funded. A lot of those volunteer hours were from the food bank. They have a lot of, a lot of volunteers there. So to wrap up, I just wanted to share this new impact tool that was created by the FCSS Association of Alberta. A lot of times we talk about FCSS and how our impacts are invisible, like, they're measured by crises that, that don't happen, right? So through prevention, FCSS programs help address social, social issues before they can escalate into lifelong issues. Prevention is powerful, and our work helps build safer, stronger, more connected communities. So FCSSAA has been collecting data from all over the province to try to help showcase that impact that we have. This impact tool was, has just been launched, but you can scan the QR code, and then you can pull up like certain areas or towns or communities, and it will show you specific stats. So when I pulled it up, they had this information for Drayton. This is from 2023. It should be updated soon. But we can start using this tool to highlight the work we do with stats on the provincial prevention priorities. And as it continues to develop, and they're working on it more and more information is collected, we'll create stats that help tell our stories of prevention and highlight the value of the work that we do. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And it has a little breakdown, too, of children, youth, adults, seniors, families, community, everything there. That's so cool. Wonderful. Well, thank you very much for your presentation this morning. Does anyone have any questions this morning for Ms. Finn? Counselor Evans? Sure.
So I'm just reading participants in direct and indirect programs, 23,320. So we've got a little over 7,000 in the town, 7,000 in the county. So this is pretty much every man, woman, and child using your services twice. There must be, I'm assuming, some folks who use many of these programs with that kind of number there. Or am I miscalculating? Is there more people maybe in Parkland that we help that I'm not taking into consideration? I, I just find that number is, is very high.
It is very high. But then, like, you can think about things like Canada Day, or the Pumpkin Walk, or these events that bring in large groups of people. So it's not unique individuals, it's just participant numbers. So if you looked at that grant list of those 15 different grants, all of those programs are also reporting all the people that came there. So there's, it's quite a lot of different programs that encompass that 23,000. Yeah.
Yeah, and some that, that involve large numbers of people, like the ones you stated. Okay, thanks.
And this is the, like, I guess Counselor Evans had said, it's multiple. It could be same person five times. They were at the Pumpkin Walk, or they were at, yeah. Yeah, that helps. It's a good question. It helps kind of, yeah. Where did the 23,000 people come from? Counselor McGee?
Morning, Jen.
Morning.
Thanks for the report. And so as I was reading it at home, I was thinking of things about, you know, what would, what would I ask about measuring, right? In a sense, and so you, you had said that when you, because for me, public health and measurements, they, they don't really work well together. We, we don't know if we got the kids at Kickstand early, and we, we just, it's, it's very difficult. But we, we need to keep talking about it. And so the work that you do and our caregivers do in the community, we need to, we need to talk about that in a, in a broader way. So this little tool should be really useful. So to the question, though, when we think about, I was thinking, what's the best bang for our buck, right? We could say Canada Day because there's a flood of people coming in. But if, if the province said we are going to suspend FCSS funding, or we're going to cut it by 20%, then you start to say to yourself, well, what, what, what won't we do? Or conversely to that, if we were to go to the province saying, look what we've done, we need you to, we need you to add 20% to our budget, and, and look what we could do. Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, for sure. I think, like, if we had more funding, we would put it into the grant funding, because we can never meet the demand. There's so many great programs in our community that, that are worthy of getting the funding, but we're just not able to fund them all. So that would be, if we got extra funding, probably where it would go. If our funding ever was cut back, I know one thing that we wouldn't be able to stop doing would be like the resource navigation and the systems navigation. We spend so much time, and it's so important to the community, to help navigate those social programs from the province and the federal government. And they're just so important to keeping people resilient and, and helping them navigate life's challenges. So they're definitely a, a high priority.
And so when you're, you're there and working through it every day, you would say, yeah, that's, that's where I can see it. Like, if I'm sitting at your desk, that's what I can see. Like if I'm sitting at your desk, that's what I can see. And lots of times we just do what we do. But the excitement for you is to see the wins, right? So you've spoken about navigation, people that are just totally don't understand and here's the help and they just go, there it is. That's the key from your end, right?
I believe so, yeah. I think it keeps people from escalating further into crisis. It helps keep them in a safer place and yeah.
Yeah, your statement on the measured by crises that don't happen, I think is huge. Hard to measure, but it's huge, so. Thanks. And do we need to be able to advocate for more budget funding? You likely do that yourselves. Is it, do you go directly to the MLA or do you come through us to go to the, we need more funding because here's why? And then it'll relate to a question that I was thinking about asking. Are we comparable? Is it sort of funded by the population? Can you tell me how that works? And then tying in the county of Brazu, they also fund and it's all done by some calculation.
Yeah, the calculations are all done through the province on, yeah, membership and your population. We have the FCSS Association of Alberta and they kind of do the advocacy for us and work with the provincial government to try to get the funding increases and whatnot. But whenever, you know, at our FCSS conference, we usually have breakfast with our MLAs and we're able to sit there and talk with them about our funding stresses and we're always advocating for more funding. We got a four and a half percent increase in 2023, which wasn't very substantial. I think a lot of things get downloaded to FCSS and our jobs just keep expanding more and we haven't received a lot of extra funding. So anytime we have the opportunity to speak with someone, we talk about that. And yeah, Brazu County, they have brought in FCSS and then us as FCSS too. So they share their funding that way.
And it's not that they're, it's calculated funding so that they get something, you have to pay that, we have to pay that, right? Okay, well, thanks very much for all that you do.
Thanks.
Thank you for that. Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the excellent report. Once again, looks like a very successful year for FCSS as well. You know, you've mentioned a few of the programs that you do, like working with vulnerable populations or newcomers or mental health issues. I think they are very important issues for any community, not only ours. I think the most profound sentence on the report is the final one that you've put up there is a dollar invested in prevention can save up to $7 to $10 in the future, right? So that's very helpful for us to, you know, let the community know that, you know, that's why we are doing it now. In the future, we will be saving this for a community by doing this, right? So I'm just going by Counselor McGee's comments there. Do you only get the funding through one stream in provincial government or are you applying for, is there other grants that you apply? And also are there any other community organizations, businesses that support your programs?
So most of our funding is through the province, like all of our operating costs. It's that 80/20 split between the province and the municipalities. If there's like a special program or project that we want to do and there's extra grant funding available, then we will pursue that. We have got grant funding in the past for special projects or one-off projects or maybe things that didn't fall under our FCSS mandate that we would try to get some extra funds for. We do receive donations from the community. Our Snow Angels program tends to get some donations from the community because they really appreciate the work that our Snow Angels do for the seniors. And then for community events, sometimes we get sponsors or donations made for those too, like just like mostly things we're doing with like the Community Parenting Coalition or other groups, sometimes they'll sponsor those.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing I was thinking is for the next year or the future, what do you see as one of the priorities or the main priority for FCSS? You know, we all know that mental health is an issue that's coming up every conversation that we have, right? So for the last couple of years, do you think that, you know, we'd be more focusing on those kind of programs or what would you say that, you know, would be the main focus point?
Yeah, we're gonna, so the FCSS has just gone under a new accountability framework that we're learning this year. We're going to be implementing it in the next couple of years. It's changing our reporting and just kind of how things are under FCSS. So our board's going to go through some strategic planning and help identify those things. Mental health is definitely one that's been talked about. And another is volunteerism. I'd really like to get more information to community groups on how to like retain, maintain and manage their volunteers. You know, we're working with the Let's Volunteer platform. We'd like to see that grow and start encouraging more volunteerism through that way too.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So just a quick question. So are we doing a good job in letting, I guess, individuals, when you talk about like navigation resources and things like that, are we doing a good job in letting individuals know of the services that we offer when we're talking about crises and safety? Is it easy for them to find or do they have to do some searching? How do we get them or is it just, do they just know FCSS is where I go to if I need the support?
I think 211 sends a lot of people to FCSS. We try to like share the information and get it out to people, like for seniors, a lot of seniors don't know about like Alberta seniors' benefits or programs like that. So now we start doing seniors' newsletters so that the information's getting them out that way. And we're going to more like resource fairs and things like that to try to get the information out there.
So people have a good idea of how to connect with you and how to find what they need?
And service providers send people our way a lot as well. So if they're not sure, they will just send them to FCSS.
Perfect, perfect. Well, thank you very much for your report. If there's no further questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion this morning? I think the motion is, I'll go to Counselor Sheriffs for information.
Sure, I'll make motion that council accept the Drayton Valley and District FCSS 2024 annual report for information.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion?
I would just add to Counselor Gomana's point that I think that research shows, that is a great little quote there, that all the dollars that are being invested now in prevention in our community definitely can save for future costs. So that's a great little icon or a little way to keep that. And when do you anticipate that to be updated, do you think?
I think they're updating it like monthly now. So most of my new information has been submitted for 2025 so far, but like as the year gets further, they'll have more.
And where would like community members or people be able to find this so they could see this?
They're starting a campaign this month, so we're going to be sharing it all. It's just been launched, it's going to be a social media campaign going out. Yep.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you so much. Any other question, comment or debate? Then I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much for your report this morning. Second up is 8.2. Our second decision item, it's like a tongue twister, is 8.2 to rescind the Employee Wellness Program Policy A0112. And this is Ms. Ross Lee Wayley this morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair, member of council. Policy A0112, the employee wellness policy, has been reviewed and does fall more under the administration than the council policies. We're asking that it be rescinded. There are several changes that need to be made to it that have been discovered since its approval in 2024. And mainly that is the type of people on some of the leaves are declared terminations in order to get something like EI benefits for maternity or paternity leave or in the case of a mental health leave where they're on sick leave for an extended period of time, they are immediately terminated from using the pool or the gym. This would help in the case of both paternity and maternity leave and in the case of mental health leave. So we would like this to be an administrative policy that can be adjusted and so we are asking for it to be rescinded.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for Ms. Wayley on this decision item this morning? No, seems pretty basic in order for it to move to administration. Counselor McGee?
So this is something that's come forward and you're moving it forward. Does it get debated widely within the organization before it ever gets here? I'm just wondering who gets to do that.
Through the chair too, Counselor McGee. This has definitely been a very hot topic within the organization and widely discussed.
And the policy is operational?
Yeah, and do we, in a debate like that, how do you choose the direction?
Through the chair to Counselor McGee, generally based on the arguments coming up to management or senior management, we base it on common sense and consensus.
Perfect. And then, so something like this, our wellness program policy is regularly reviewed and updated. How often would we review and update policies like this?
Madam Chair, we are striving to update all policies and bylaws within the next two years and putting review timelines on them based on the type of policy it is. So we strive to review all policies within a council term. That has not necessarily been the case previously, so we are working to get up to speed and then we will be hoping to review all policies within council term every term.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Does this policy right now applies to both union and non-union or is it only for non-union?
Through the chair to Counselor Gomana, this applies to all staff, union and out of scope.
Okay, and then when we rescind this?
It still applies to all staff and all Brazo County staff and the RSCMP.
Okay, as an administrative policy instead of?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor, okay, thank you.
If there's no further questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Counselor Clark?
I will make the motion that council rescind policy A0112, Employee Wellness Program Policy adopted in 2024, indirect administration to manage the Employee Wellness Program through an administrative policy.
Thank you very much for that. I will now call the motion all in favor. Oh, sorry. I'll call for comment, question, debate on the motion before I call the motion. My mind was ahead. If there's no comment, question or debate, then I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried. Thank you for that. Next up is 8.3, Bylaw 2025-06D. And this is for Municipal Development Plan Amendment to Future Land Use MAP. This is for second reading only. Ms. Wayley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The public hearing was held this morning. Due to the intermunicipal collaboration framework and intermunicipal development plan, the timeline for submitting feedback means administration will be continuing to accept feedback until August 15th. Administration is asking for second reading today and will bring a final report to the September 10th meeting of council for a third reading.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Counselor McGee, do you have a question? Okay, Counselor Clark, do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I guess this bylaw amendment is, I mean, the point of it is to make it easier, less red tape and more straightforward, right? For landowners to do what they need to do that makes sense in town, right? In terms of development, so. That's what this is for.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor McGee, did you have a question?
No, I would make a motion.
Oh, you're going to make a motion? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mayor Dodds, I will make a motion that council give second reading to Bylaw 2025-06D, Municipal Development Plan Amendment to the Future Land Use MAP, RFD 25185. Question on that, why are we not asking for third? Is it the public process?
Through the chair to Counselor McGee, yes, this is public process. I could have done the public hearing for the land use bylaws today, but the municipal development required a longer timeline as was pointed out by our neighbors, so.
We have to refer when we do an amendment to statutory plans and things like that. So then we wait for the timeframe for those referrals to come back. So this allows us to do second reading before the third and final reading. Okay, perfect. If there's no other questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion for second reading on the Amendment to Municipal Development Plan 2025-06D? Oh, sorry, you made, wow. Oh, okay, a motion has been made and any other comment, question, debate on the motion? Okay, then I will call the motion all in favor. That is carried. Okay, wow. Next up, we have our final decision item. Hopefully I get this one right. 8.4, which is subdivision and development appeal board appointments. This is for clerk and members. Ms. Wayley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Municipal Government Act, Section 621, requires the council establish a subdivision and development board and further, the MGA requires that they are trained and that they are eligible to sit. On July 28th, the town hosted an in-person subdivision and development appeal board member and clerk training with Brownlee LLP. Training is valid for three years. Individuals that have successfully completed the training are listed below. Those include Sue Harris for clerk, Harvey Geisberg, board member, Scott Huska, board member, Jeff Wardlow, board member, Dale Peters, board member and subsequent to the writing of this report, Heather Anderson as board member. So we are asking today, in the recommendation that council appoint, said named previously people with the inclusion of Heather Anderson to the subdivision and development appeal board and Sue Harris as clerk.
Thank you very much for that. I think that I will remove myself for apprehension of bias on this particular decision item and I will ask Counselor Sheriffs to come and chair for this decision item, 8.4. All right, so is there any questions about this? Counselor, Counselor McGee?
I do have a question. I noted in the Free Press that one of the members that's applied will become, if elected, does that come into consideration?
Through the chair to Counselor McGee, it is always better to have more people available for the SDAB should it be required to convene. And we cannot in any way, shape or form predict what will happen on October 20th. So in the interim, we are bringing a lot of planning things forward. It would be helpful to appoint all those who have been educated.
Yeah, I thought that case, thanks. Lastly, Counselor Charlie Miner was the chair of the DAB for a long period of time. Are we, do we send out a note of gratitude or how do we handle that?
Through the chair to Counselor McGee, we have provided a thank you card and gift to the previous chair.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Could you remind me of the composition of the board? Is it only members at large or is there any counselors sitting on that as well?
Through the chair to Counselor Gomana, my current understanding is that there is no counselors that sit the SDAB because it is a quasi judicial body.
Okay. Okay, and do we know how many times that SDAB has been met for the last couple of years?
Through the chair to Counselor Gomana, it is our understanding through changing and several administration changes that we have had zero SDAB hearings.
Okay, thank you. It's good to know, thank you.
Right, yeah. Counselor Clark, yes? Oh, you want to make a motion? Okay, if there's no other questions? No, go ahead.
All right, I will make the motion that council appoint Sue Harris as clerk and Harvey Geisberg, Scott Huska, Jeff Wardlow and Dale Peters as members for a three-year term ending on July 27th, 2028 to the subdivision and development appeal board.
Sorry to interrupt, but could we also add Heather Anderson? She wasn't in the original.
Okay, and Heather Anderson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any comment or question or motion? No, all in favor then?
Okay, and that wraps up our decision items for this morning. I will call a brief 10-minute break and we will reconvene our meeting at 10:25 a.m. and we will jump into council reports. Counselor Clark, you are up first.
I had a very light couple of weeks, so I got nothing to report.
Thank you for that. Yeah, Counselor Evans?
I, yeah, I had a nice break and did nothing but work on my trailer for the last little while, so that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor McGee, you're up for your report. Just in time. You want me to go to councillor Gomana? Okay, I'll go to councillor Gomana first.
Thank you. Yeah, not a whole lot to report. One thing happened, August 5th, had the opportunity to walk through the new palliative care unit in Redwell Hospital, and looks great, so it will be hopefully having a opening, grand opening, soon here, and then, I believe we will get an invitation for that, maybe the next month or so, so, looks fantastic. Took four years to get there, but finally, finally we are there. On the 6th, had a, had a meeting with University of Alberta regarding newcomer supports, what we have here and what we need. It was a very worthwhile conversation to understand what we have, what other communities have, and what we lack here, and how do we get there to have those supports. You know, when you rode through the chatter and your opinions and all that, you know, it's vital, it's vitally important that we have these supports in our community, so that's about it, thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Great news on the palliative care unit, like you said, that took a while, so I'm looking forward to not being there, but to have a tour. Thank you for your report. Councillor McGee, are you ready, or should I go to deputy sheriffs? Okay, perfect.
I'm a bit, I think by councillor Revins, really, not like sort of over the, sort of over the long weekend and all of those things, but I had an opportunity to sit with a group of people to talk about our University of Alberta folks with rural wealth, and so we were talking generally about affordable housing, but senior housing, and we had to fill the two boardrooms yesterday, and I thought it was really exciting and people were motivated, so it's, it's going to be coming to us at some point in time for us to, to encourage movement, so, right now, we don't have a concept plan, we're just talking about it, so we probably need to go to the concept plan, we need to talk a little bit about funding and how that funding may work, but that'll come when it's, when it's ready. But it was a great meeting yesterday, thank you.
Thank you for your report. Deputy sheriffs?
So, just like everyone else, seems we all enjoyed a little bit of a break, and I did some camping by the river, which was great. Yesterday, I went and attended the meeting that councillor McGee was talking about, and I agree, I've been involved with that group a little bit from the beginning and seeing the traction that they're getting and involvement from the community was really amazing, lots of great idea, and can't wait to see where it's going. Let's put it.
Perfect, thank you for your report, and I am the same. Some C A O briefing, just kind of hearing what's happening in the community, what I missed while everyone was away, and I guess, kind of focusing and reflecting on what's happening in our community, and I as well attended the rural wealth creation yesterday. It was an absolutely fantastic meeting, it was nice to see seniors come together and see the housing, the need for housing in the community, and we got to dream big yesterday, so it was really nice because you could put down anything that anyone could vision, so crazy enough, that was all very, we were broken out into four groups, and it was all very similar of what, you know, the needs are, and, you know, I think that it is important, we need to be thinking about what those next steps are because we are an aging community, right? So, we're gonna be in a situation where we don't have housing for seniors, right? So, there is a desire, you know, Maria and Geraldine and her team are doing a fantastic job in supporting us in education and in supporting us in rural wealth creation. It was also nice to see most of the county was at the table with us yesterday, as well as different groups and organizations, and, and you're seeing that collaboration grow, so I do believe it will, you know, take flight, and it's starting to definitely get some momentum. I was worried a little bit at the beginning of how are you gonna sell this to the community, but everyone is buying in, and I look forward to it coming to council and coming to, you know, the community so we can look at that, what that concept plan looks like and look at ways that we can make this happen, so, yeah, it was a great, it was a great workshop yesterday. And that is it for me as well. Excuse me, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept our reports as information? Councillor Revins?
I haven't made a motion yet, so I may as well, I'll accept the reports for information.
Thank you very much for that, all in favor. That is carried. Next up is council items, roundtable discussions. Does anybody have anything? I do have a list. I have a list, we've been getting quite a few emails come into our C A O and council inbox in the last couple of weeks, so I just wanted to bring these up with administration and just see where we are with everything, so I'll kind of just go through them. Council, I think you're all aware of all of these, so first up is potholes, the big hot topic in the community. I know it's raining again today, so we're not gonna see any action happening, but are we on track? I know that our Public Works G M had provided us some information regards to sections in town that would be done. Have our contractors begun the work, and where are we at with that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, there are, we are on track for the potholes that we can fill ourselves, the contractors have sent in the updated quotes as they had exceeded their validity period of the 30 days. The major pothole issues that are requiring a contractor, of course, are the 50th Ave, westbound lane across from McDonald's, the intersection of 50 and 50 by the electronic sign, the north entrance exit to Value Drug Mart, the southbound lane on 50th, just north of 54th Ave slash Industrial Road, and the intersection of 46th Ave and 50th Street. Those all require removal of the pavement, reinstatement of the subgrade, and in many cases, removal of the sidewalk and reinstalling for curb and gutter, so those will all be contracted out and should be on track to be started as soon as Mother Nature allows, so.
Perfect, so we will see those happening?
We will see those happen this year, yes.
And since those are bigger projects than anticipated, so, like, for 50th by 711 and the shale there, will, I guess they just close off a section of that road? Because that's quite extensive right there.
Yeah, yes, Madam Chair, they will have to divert traffic briefly while it is being fixed, so.
And do we anticipate, like, how long it will take for the bigger, since it's, we're going down subgrade and everything like that? Like, are these weeks at a time, or do we feel we can get these done, or maybe that's a shelly question?
This would be days at a time, ma'am, not weeks.
Okay, perfect. Does anybody else have any questions or comments around? It's probably blowing up your inbox too, outside of what we're getting with this one. Yeah, and it's the amount of rain, which I'm grateful for, the amount of rain, has been a lot, definitely this year, so Mother Nature has not, like you said, been in our favor with that. Next up is, we also had a concern come in about 43rd and 43rd there. There were some photos that we had sent as well. I know that at one time there was a plan for engineering drawings or plan, like when we had scoped 50th and 43rd and all that. Do we know what's happening at that intersection? And have we kind of addressed the gentleman with the concerns there?
Madam Chair, administration is reaching out to the gentleman. It is already, through your budgeted process, approved for design, so it isn't being an engineered design, and then there will be consultation with the public regarding what type of intersection would be replaced or going in there, and again, that'll also be included with traffic counts, but, yes, the gentleman's issue was definitely brought to light and has now been sent to the engineers for inclusion in the design, so.
Perfect, thank you for that. Yeah, I know, I think this is where we've talked about a roundabout or something happening there, right?
We should probably dispel the rumor of a roundabout now, that would have a driveway backing into a, into a traffic circle, so we will not be looking at a roundabout, very likely at that intersection.
A traffic circle?
Roundabout.
A roundabout? Did you say we won't be?
We won't be.
Oh, we won't be?
We can't have a driveway that backs into one.
Oh, right there.
So, we will, we're likely, likely not looking at a roundabout for that intersection.
Oh, never thought about that. Overpass? Underpass?
Anything is possible, councillor Revins.
An underpass? Don't they do that in some countries? Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that one's being handled as well. Another concern came in, in the area of the Splash Park and Rotary, so the speed signs, I know that we take those solar traffic calming signs that are kind of flashier speed, but you're going, and we rotate them. There was a suggestion maybe that we could put it in the park there, just to remind people that it is a parker to catch, because I know when you do, does catch your eye, you automatically are aware of what speed you're going, right? So, that was one of the things I came into our inbox too, that I said I would bring up.
Madam Chair, members of council, we do, we do rotate those flashing speed, solar speed signs. We are looking at the possibility of moving it there for a temporary period of time. Of course, that area does already include speed bumps, so if you're, you know, flying, generally you'll know you're going a little faster than the roads generally allowing, but we are looking at moving the flashing sign there to assist.
And then with that too, how does our enforcement officers, C P Os and that, determine where the signs are going, kind of rotating next?
Madam Chair, I'd have to get back to you on their exact evaluation process, but it would be in conjunction with Public Works, so.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you for that. And then the last one, I think it was the last one, maybe you guys can think of if there was something else. We did have a resident that was concerned about cannabis retail hours and how it fits in, I guess, law and our land use bylaw and things like that, that they were opened outside of what the, I guess, approved hours are.
So, through the chair, to the chair, madam, the, we have sent requests for confirmation of permitting hours as issued by the A G L C. We are, we do not have any currently listed as town, they were originally in your business licensing bylaw, and when that was reviewed by legal before it came back for approval, the lawyers did suggest that we remove the business hours from the business license bylaw, as the business license bylaw does not actually apply to all businesses in town requiring a license of some home-based businesses, those sort of things. So, it should have been included in your land use bylaw when that review was done. We do know that that has been left out, so we intend to bring some updates to the land use bylaw in November, December of this year.
So, the particular businesses that are of concern, they're not working outside of anything that they shouldn't be then?
We're just confirming with A G L C before we issue that, so we're waiting to hear back.
Okay, so kind of the A G L C supersedes that whole, everything?
They license the cannabis sales.
For the hours, yeah.
They license everything to do with cannabis sales, or it would just be a development permit, so we are checking with them before working with enforcement, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you for that. I'm just gonna go to councillor.
So, they also set the...
Oh, can you use your mic?
They also set the hours for opening of liquor, right?
Correct, councillor McGee.
Yeah, liquor, cannabis.
And so if I'm running two stores, you know, I'm the only guy there, and I just happen to have that store over there and that store there, seems to make sense that I would run the same hours. But A O T C knows?
We need to confirm what they have on their website because it's a little ambiguous, so.
Councillor Gomana?
Thank you for that. So, as far as I can remember, when we went through the cannabis retail bylaw, I believe we set an opening hour time on the bylaw itself. I think that's what the individual is pointing at.
That's what I was thinking.
Saying that, exactly, saying that, you know, you're saying we can open here, but these guys are opening more than that, right? So, I guess, either we need to let everybody know that they can be, open any hours, or we need to go back to the bylaw and say, to everyone saying, no, it's just, just this, right, just to make it a fair playing field for everyone.
Yes, through the chair to councillor Gomana, we are reviewing all of the associated bylaws, and in conjunction with A G L C, we don't want to be out of line in compliance with provincial legislation, so we have to do all of the research and then we will come back with an answer, so.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, I think that was it for kind of everything that I had coming. Does anybody else have anything else, councillor Gomana, do you? I'll go to councillor Gomana first.
Yeah, the other email that we've got was about some provocative signage and racist signage on some of the properties in town, so we've, have you done any?
Through the chair to councillor Gomana, that question will have to be answered in closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor McGee?
Two points, the, we've always struggled a little bit with our traffic lights and how they work and, you know, what triggers what, and timing and those kinds of things, and we've been talking about that for some time, and it sounds to me like we just needed to get the right parts, and we needed to get a crew in that's gonna do all of that. Do we, are we there, are we closed, or?
Through the chair to councillor McGee, from what I've reviewed of your budget prior to my employment, you had approved certain upgrades to those lights. I can bring back a report from Infrastructure for you regarding the, where we are and the progress of that.
Which, which lights are you talking about?
All the lights.
Oh, all the lights.
They'll trigger, and I'm the only guy there, and I'm going, what, what, what's going on? I'm starting shooting reds now. Just kidding. Anyway, our lights can be a struggle sometimes, is all I'm saying. So, however you look at it, it's, you know, north, south, east, west?
Yeah.
In one car?
Yeah.
And we're shut down, we're shut down for 20 minutes before anybody can turn left again?
Yeah.
It's sometimes just a little bit, 20 minutes is a little exaggerated.
It's fixed, yeah.
And the other one was the...
Can I add something to that?
Sure, councillor Gomana?
Sorry.
A rebuttal or a question for that?
No, not rebuttal, no, no, I think I'm adding value hopefully. So, the discussion was that, of course, how do we synchronize some of those, right? So, at that time, the answer was that, you know, the control mechanism wasn't capable of doing that. I was wondering if there's any progress on that, or could you bring us a report back, like you mentioned?
Again, through the chair to councillor Gomana, I believe it was approved in your budget. I will have Infrastructure bring back a report to council where they are with this process.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add one thing to that too? Because during this time had also came up, sorry, Tom, was the lights at, I guess would be McDonald's and down in that area, the pedestrian lights weren't working, and that was a concern because that's quite a busy highway, and the schools use that to go to McDonald's and Walmart and things like that, so just to check if they're working. And then the pedestrian lights on the ring road, when you cross, they're working on the south side, but they weren't working on, this was a week ago, they weren't working on the north side, so when you'd hit it, it wouldn't turn on, but on the north side, just to make a little note of that. What's that? North and south? Not on the ring road, they're on the ring road going to, I guess, the cemetery and then water treatment there, so coming down 50th and the ring road? That one, when you go down, still would be range road? Yeah, it was working going north, but it wasn't working going south. Does that make sense? Go ahead, councillor McGee.
Last thing is, and I don't think it needs to be closed, is online payments. There was an answer that...
Through the chair to... Yeah, through the chair to councillor McGee, we did have an email request from a resident that they wanted automatic debit from their account to pay their bills. That is not possible with our current system that we have. We are looking at the upgrades, of course, and implementing the, the new system. We're hoping something like that could be possible going forward, however, we don't know yet. We do, however, allow for online payments, you just have to proactively go in and pay your bills online.
We've had, been talking about this for about eight years, yeah.
This gentleman's asking to have it removed, so.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Does anybody else have anything else for roundtable questions?
I'll ask it, because, so, it's a little bit of a hot topic too, but I'll bring it up anyways. The message that I sent about watering our flowers after it's been pouring for two days, is it because there's a certain schedule and they just follow a schedule, rain or shine? Or, like, it didn't make any sense.
So, through the chair to councillor, to deputy mayor sheriffs, yes, you're right, the optics of that look really strange. However, we have several situations in that, there are a schedule for fertilizing that has to be followed, and secondly, the baskets actually don't get a whole lot of water when it's raining, so we have tried not watering them when we're having a large rainstorm, and they die off, they're dry. So, yes, although the optics of watering in the rain looks really, really silly, they are doing both fertilizing and watering at the same time, so.
And I wanted to bring it up just because, I mean, we talk about it, now I know, but maybe for the public, because there's been, it's been brought up several times, right? This kind of little information that it's not just water, there is fertilizer, just, you know, taking care of the plants, maybe?
Absolutely, we can update.
Perfect, and I know that plants that we have, the hanging baskets are beautiful, but they do take a lot of water. I plant them every year in my yard, and if you miss one day of watering, rain or shine... I plant them every year in my yard, and if you miss one day of watering, rain or shine, they don't seem to look as great, because I water mine in the rain, too, and it's, makes no sense, but, it's the particular, what are those ones called? The petunias or whatever, is it petunias or? Yeah, they're very, they're a needy bunch. They're beautiful, but they're needy.
Well, unless they're full, a lot of that rain will run off.
It doesn't go into the pot.
And it drips.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, if there is nothing else for roundtable discussions, we have no information items today. Is there a member of council that would like to move us into closed for 13.1?
Yeah, I can do that.
Counselor Gomana, thank you very much for that, all in favor? That is carried. We'll just take a minute.